Good evening, welcome to the Great Town Council Workshop of September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Going to begin with roll call. Counselor Height?
Here.
Counselor Meany?
Present.
Counselor McGuire?
Present.
Counselor Gass?
Present.
And I am Counselor Chapel. And to my right, I just want to welcome our newly appointed interim town manager, Josh Tiffany, who's joining us for the first time in his new role tonight. Did you want to say anything, Josh?
Not at this time.
No, no, okay.
You'll have to pull that down.
Yeah, yeah, one trick to the tree. Okay, so we're just, we have some town manager search firm proposals to review tonight. And then we're going to touch on a couple other shorter items related to personnel and potential ordinance revisions. Did everyone have a chance to review the proposals received? I was pleased that we had four proposals to choose from, so. And there are quite a variety of options.
If I could, I was thinking maybe we could straw poll it because if no one was interested in any one of them, there's no sense.
Yeah, that's not a bad idea.
Getting into the weeds on that one.
Well, let me just go over who we've received proposals from.
That's fair, yeah.
Yeah. So we had a proposal from Mitch Berkowitz for a consulting role. Actually, he would, he would serve as a contract employee with a total fee of ranging, depending on costs, anywhere from fifty-six hundred to ninety-five hundred dollars. We also had a proposal from Don Garrish of Eaton Peabody. He would serve in a consulting capacity with a contract for a seventy-five hundred, seventy-five hundred dollar flat fee and then additional expenses, including mileage and any advertising costs that we might incur.
Which I believe was inclusive in Mitch's price, correct, or an estimate?
No, so Mitch's price was an hourly rate.
Yeah.
That included a status as a kind of part-time, I don't know how to, it was sort of a contract employee. So he would still be eligible for workers' comp and liability, but no other benefits. And then we would pay him as an employee with taxes taken out. So it was like an hourly rate for that. And but then he also, yeah, so there was a separate fee for the cost of advertising for him. But you're right that that range does include the cost of advertising.
Whereas Don Garrish's, I don't think does, the seventy-five hundred.
That's correct, yeah. So you're right on that. So his, let me, let me elaborate on Mitch's. So his, Mitch's hourly rate would amount to at most forty-five hundred dollars in his estimation. And then there would be additional costs for advertising that might be upwards of five thousand dollars, which is where you get the range of fifty-six hundred to ninety-five hundred.
Right, Mitch's costs, you know, the high-end range of the range included the potential for having to go back out for a search.
Yes, second set.
Somebody the first time around.
That's right. So then we, as I said, we had the Eaton Peabody proposal from Don Garrish with a seventy-five hundred dollar fee plus the associated costs with advertising and such. We also had a proposal from MRI Network, which is based out of Boston. Their fee was quite high. It was one-third of the position's compensation for the year, which I estimated to be, I mean, it's going to be a range, but at the low end, it's about almost forty thousand dollars for that fee. And that does include advertising and other add-on. And then, but then there's also other add-on fees that we could potentially incur if we chose to do certain services. So that's definitely the high-end bid, around thirty-eight thousand, forty thousand dollars. And then our final proposal was for, was for a firm that specializes in recruiting for local governments. They're based out of Texas. Their fee was, they quoted a maximum of twenty-six thousand nine hundred. But that does not include advertisements, which they thought would range anywhere from seventeen hundred fifty dollars to twenty-five hundred dollars. But they did say that they would have no fee if we had to go back within twelve months for another search, with the exception of expenses such as mileage. And MRI was also the same. They had no fee if we had to rehire within a twelve-month period.
They had an interesting piece in there, too, about the exclusivity of the offer to candidates, which I thought was kind of interesting.
So, yeah, the other thing, you're right, and MRI had an exclusivity clause where even if we were potentially doing, you know, considering internal candidates, that they would still get their fee, so. So I, I actually was, so clearly there's two, two firms that are much, much more expensive. And then there's another consulting, professional consulting agency, and then an individual who's offering services. I'm, I'm prepared to rule out the most expensive one, which was MRI Boston. They also aren't special, specialized with town government. They do a lot of recruiting for corporations. And I, I felt like the proposal wasn't really tailored to our needs specifically, though, as I was reading through it. So, but SGR, what's that?
Felt a bit boilerplate.
It was a little boilerplate. SGR did do a search recently for Kennebunk, and they included their, some of their content that they produced for Kennebunk in their proposal. And it does seem like they are a real specialty service provider for governments, and they have a lot of experience. I was particularly, I was particularly impressed with their potential network that they can advertise to. So they are more expensive, but perhaps, as we discussed tonight, I don't want to just rule them out, right? Because they, they might provide some value in terms of how we, the type of outreach we could have. What are others' thoughts on MRI Boston and their fee of forty thousand, forty thousand dollars?
I'm, I'm willing to exclude them.
Exclude them?
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't we focus on the other three? Well, what are, what are folks, how are folks feeling? Like, is anyone leaning one way or the other on the remaining three? Or, I was kind of torn for a couple reasons, but, Anne, go ahead.
I thought that Don Garrish did a good job for us last time, and I would work with him again. He, he has a lot of experience and a strong network across Maine and a good handle on what towns are doing. His fee is definitely in the ballpark and, and, and I, you know, you can buy a lot of advertising for the difference between his proposal cost and, and some of these others. I, I did very much appreciate Mitch's proposal. When we were discussing him as a possibility for the town moderator for the, for the September ninth in-person meeting, a couple people had brought up that he serves on the Water District. And I, I'm just, I'm not sure, I just don't know whether that should be a conflict or not. Obviously Mitch has a ton of experience and, and, you know, his insights are really valuable. And his, his proposal's in the ballpark. But, and I, I guess I just, I, I do, I did value the Strategic Government Resources Network and stuff. I, you know, and they, they have other, you know, they have ways to advertise that could get in some other national candidates. But I'm, I'm a little concerned, I mean, we did get one, we did interview one, you know, candidate from outside of Maine who was from Arizona last time around, opted not to go with that person. But, you know, it's a hard thing to do, to, to bring somebody in who's never lived in Maine and doesn't really know how things operate here. So I, I guess my preference would, would be Don with Mitch as a second.
Others have thoughts they want to share? Go ahead, Marnie.
The company from Texas, I looked at their, their placements, and it looks like they're, they, they came as far east as Missouri and were Maine. So we want somebody with our values. So that would bring it back down to Mitch or the company from Augusta, I forget their name.
Eaton Peabody, yeah. Okay, so your preference would be to be with someone more local?
Yep. How do you say it, Peabody?
Eaton Peabody, yeah, like the town in Massachusetts.
Yeah, I, I guess.
I keep wanting to say Peabody.
Peabody.
It just, it strikes me that, I mean, you have to get a town manager from a region that doesn't deal with snow removal.
No, that's true.
You know, like, I mean, it's not that it's, you know, rocket science, but, you know, it just.
Well, I mean, I think their outreach.
A town manager doesn't do a lot of shovel.
Yeah, but he still has to make it work.
I think their outreach could, you know, certainly be inclusive of New England and other states that are, have snow.
Yes, and I'm not saying that somebody, you know, that hasn't dealt with snow removal, I would discount them out of hand. It's just, it's a thought that occurred to me.
Yeah, no, that's certainly a good point. Were you having a preference between the three remaining ones that we're considering? Or are you?
I, I, I feel like I'm leaning towards Eaton Peabody. I think, you know, I don't, and I, I don't know, it seems like there's, I mean, well, what, is there value in having a, you know, an individual from a, a firm that perhaps has more sort of depth? Does that make any sense?
Yeah, I think, I think there's value there. They can, they might have a lot more outreach just with personal contacts or organizations rather than just an individual.
So, yeah, I guess I'm, yeah, I think I just said I'm favoring Eaton Peabody.
Dan, did you have a preference?
Yeah, I think, you know, frankly, from an expense standpoint, I agree with you. I think in both of the more expensive proposals, and the one in particular that was for, that found a town manager for Kennebunk, there were some good things in the information that they put together. And, you know, that's, I think, maybe something for us to think about, too. We have a lot of that material ourselves already, sort of, we would just have to gather it together and figure out what we want to put together for someone as an introduction to town. So yes, for me, it would be between Mitch and Eaton Peabody. I was on the council when we had Don, when we hired Don to do the search previously. Excuse me. You know, Mitch affords some insight that Don doesn't have.
That's right.
Don has, I think, perhaps a broader network. But I really don't know, you know, what Mitch does in his free time, so he may have, he may have, have more connections and network, too. He, there were a couple of things in his proposal that made me think that he either works with other people or perhaps networks with other people to do these things, because he mentioned that he's done this work before. So I guess where I'm kind of on the fence a little bit is that I think Mitch has, is keenly aware of what we're trying to accomplish, and that's a plus. I think Don has, I suspect Don has a broader network, and he has worked with us before. And so I think there, there might be an advantage there. To be honest with you, I, I really haven't, I was kind of hoping this discussion might push me one way or another.
Yeah, I also, as, you know, I was surprised I, I was even considering SGR. I mean, the price tag, the price tag is high, but it is all-inclusive for the most part. Well, I guess they were charging for advertising, so. But they are, they would produce quite a, quite a lot of documentation that, to be honest, we could use as a, you know, a marketing tool for economic development, too. There was a lot of real, concise information that was visually stimulating also. And then I, I did, I did think that their, their network was pretty vast. And I certainly see the value of going with people that are local because they know Maine and they know the community here, and the people that they'd be recruiting theoretically would also have those qualities. But, I mean, we hear a lot about how Maine needs to, to bring people here, and our workforce is shrinking. So I guess I was having concerns about, because we heard from Nate before he left that the pool of candidates for town managers was very small, and that there's a lot of towns looking for town managers right now. So I guess my one hesitation with the local companies was that we'd be really limiting ourselves with the availability of people who might apply to the position. So that was my one hesitation.
Yeah, I think, I think that's, I mean, I think those are very valid concerns. I think we're in a unique position now that we weren't in even when we hired Nate. We have some significant irons in the fire with some, that require some long-term focus that I think would be attractive, quite frankly, to someone who's looking for any challenges at town manager. And then there's always the wild card, that when you, when you go out to search for something like this, you just never know who's available in the moment. You know, obviously, we don't have to accept any of the candidates that are presented to us if none of them qualify. That's a different problem. But, and I think between, you know, the executive summary of our comp plan and some of the other documents that we have, that we could put together, you know, a, a pretty thorough presentation of, of what we're about without a lot of effort. And maybe even, you know, that would be part of the expectation to whichever candidate we choose. We could give them the, those documents and ask them to put together, you know, something to use.
Right. I remember when Mr. Garrish of Eaton Peabody was here last time, when we were talking about an interim manager position. He did mention that, because he referenced his proposal for the full manager search. He did mention that he doesn't typically use regional, well, he might use regional networks to post, but he doesn't typically use national resources for posting, but he would be open to looking into things. So perhaps that's a conversation we could have.
Well, I think I remember, too, when we last hired him, he said that, you know, people that are looking for work that might be further afield than New England, you know, they're sort of, you know, they know what boards and advertisements and publications to look at. So I think, you know, I don't think we, I don't think we advertised nationally the last time.
No, didn't.
Yet I actually believe we got one candidate from Mexico City, so.
Okay.
Good figure.
Wow. One differentiator, and I certainly want to echo Anne's point, that we certainly appreciate Mitch's and everybody else's proposal. I guess I'm also kind of waffling between Mitch and Eaton Peabody. But I'm, I think Eaton Peabody would be my first choice, both, both because I think they have more staff and resources to draw from. I also was a little reluctant to have Mitch as an employee of the town. I, I didn't, I wasn't super comfortable with that. I think it would create a lot more work for John and staff here, to also have him on payroll.
Just be cleaner.
It'd be cleaner. The other differentiator between Eaton Peabody and Mitch was that Eaton Peabody was definitely talking about doing background checks and things like that, and Mitch didn't include that in his proposal. Perhaps he would if we went back to him. But if we move forward with Eaton Peabody, because it sounds like a lot of us are on the same page there, one question I would have for them would be, if we go through this process and aren't able to find a suitable candidate, or we hire someone and they leave within twelve months, what, what is the fee for resuming a search?
Good question, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, you know, I think that I, again, my assumptions could be incorrect, but I understand, you know, the, things are more fluid and people are staying in positions for shorter periods of time. But there's someone who stays for a couple of years, and there's someone who stays for five years. And those are significantly different impacts on the community. And I'm not sure we'll find somebody who will stay for fifteen or twenty anymore.
It's just not typical of how people, yeah, do work nowadays, but, yeah.
But I think, I think we probably.
Five years, yeah.
I think we have, I think we're more likely to get the five-year candidate from New England.
I think so, too.
Than we are from far outside the region.
Yeah, I mean, I think I would be, and we can talk about the qualities we want in a town manager when we regroup with whoever we enlist as a search firm. But, I mean, I definitely would be looking for someone who's not, who's not using Gray as a way, as a, you know, a training ground for other opportunities. I would, I would like to have someone committed to being here and helping us grow responsibly, so.
I think that's another reason for a more local candidate. I mean, we need, you know, we need someone who either has or is quickly going to be able to build relationships with MDOT and MTA and, and perhaps, you know, has some experience with, you know, things like brownfields or some of the federal agencies at least, know their way around that, to help us navigate some of that. We also have all the material we put together for the previous search that we can use as a starting point.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't have to, we don't have to start with a blank sheet of paper.
I mean, we, I haven't looked through all the old material, but, I don't know, we might, I don't, we might want to consider different criteria for the types of person we're looking for.
Oh, I don't disagree, but that would at least eliminate what we were looking for before.
True, yeah.
We could react to that, make changes. I find that easier to do than a blank sheet of paper exercise.
Well, sure, yeah. And if we went with Eaton Peabody, as Anne noted, you, you all hired Eaton Peabody last time you were looking for a town manager, so I would assume they would have a lot of that.
And I have to admit, that was, I thought that was, you know, it was, it was thoughtful and well-done and timely and, you know.
One, oh, one other thing, just as another note, Mitch had a timeframe that was a hard stop on December thirty-first of this year. And I think Eaton Peabody was more flexible, just saying it was going to take two to three months, but they didn't have a firm deadline.
Yep. I, I think that's, you know, I think we need the most flexible process we can put together. I think you're, you know, just for that reason, because who knows? I know some people, some towns near us have gone out three and four times before they found a suitable candidate, so.
Right, and I, I guess that's why I'd like some clarity for Eaton Peabody, if we move forward with them, about what that means for cost.
If next July, we're still looking for a town manager.
Yeah.
No, sorry, that was mine. I shouldn't share my nightmares publicly.
We share, trust me.
Okay, well, does anyone else have any thoughts they want to share? I, I feel like we have consensus that, I mean, we're going to be voting at our meeting in a, at seven o'clock. But it's, I'm glad we had this opportunity to kind of work through the thoughts together. But it sounds like we're all sort of leaning towards Eaton Peabody as our first choice.
Yep, it's helpful.
Yeah, okay. So that took a lot shorter amount of time than I was expecting, so.
That's okay.
That's all right. So what would it, so Josh, did you want to touch on the next agenda item, which was a workplace violence personnel policy update that John had proposed?
I can definitely touch on that.
Okay.
So John Hart, who sadly had to leave, so he could not be here for this, I know he very much wanted to be, is proposing some language to be added to the personnel policy relating to workplace violence. Everyone can read the pretty clear language. I'm very happy to say that this is not coming out of any specific incidence or necessity right now, but it definitely is language that once you say, "We don't have this in here," you really see where this could be a gap in certain situations. It very much breaks down every level of kind of aggressive bullying or violence in the workplace, you know, intimidation, threatening, violence, vandalism, hostile behaviors, et cetera. It just clearly outlines the town of Gray has a zero tolerance policy towards this type of activities. And I really think that it just kind of illuminates what could possibly be a gray area if this language is not included. So as I said, I'm very, very happy that this is not a reaction to any situation, but I think it is very good forethinking to just have this, you know, on the books in the event that we ever need to use it.
So John noted, so his note starts on packet page sixty-six for reference. He noted that this would be for not just employees, but also election workers. Is that, is that correct? I don't, I didn't see election workers noted in the, like, the italicized language, but he noted it in his, the memo portion of his email.
Well, he, he notes a change in state law.
Right.
In the, in the postscript, but I think that the language in italics would cover election workers as well as anybody would, would, you know, conducts business on town property. I, I would say that's voting.
I could get clarification on that, if that is a point, but that is my understanding of that as well.
Yeah, I'm, I'm only asking because it, because, because of the noted legal change. So if we're including, I mean, maybe we, maybe we don't deal with election workers in our personnel policy, and maybe that's the differentiator. I don't know if we have a separate policy for people who are only working elections. I don't.
I would think it would be better to just be all-inclusive.
Yeah, that, right.
Election workers, I think, are.
They're not, or they're not employees technically, but.
I think that they're treated as employees, actually. I think that they are, because I believe, and I could be, I'm skating on the ice here. I believe they have to do background checks.
Okay, yeah.
So I think there's that component.
Right, I'm just calling out the language to be more specific, if, just so that we're ensuring we're aligning with the, with the new law. But perhaps the word employees is encompassing enough.
And also, yeah.
Employees and anyone who conducts business with the town, on town property.
Yeah, that's the phrase, I think, that Matthew highlights, that, that does it for me. The only thing that I, that was missing from this, and it really is covered by this, but I think it's a more insidious kind of form, is just simply bullying, and it doesn't say specifically bullying. And I kind of would like to ask John if he would be okay with adding that. You know, sort of passive-aggressive behavior in the workplace is not acceptable either. And bullying can take on all manner of subtle experiences, I guess. And I just think that, you know, this isn't being done, as Josh said, because of any event that we've had. But if you don't have something like this on the books, and you have a situation, you, you're in a pickle as far as addressing it, because you don't have the policy, so.
Right.
That would be my only, only suggestion, is to, is to add to that list bullying.
Yeah, I certainly.
And he may say that, you know, that's not, you know, for, either way, it's defined legally or whatever. He may have a reason not to do it.
Right, I mean, there's the words hostile behaviors in here and, or any other act which the town finds to be inappropriate to the workplace, so.
Maybe it's just my middle school experience.
No, I, I, I'm, I'm fine with adding bullying, because I think adults, just as children, can sometimes be bullies. But, yeah, but I don't know if there's a legal reason to exclude that word.
If he's got a reason not to do it, I'm okay with that, but if he doesn't, I'd just like to suggest we add that one word.
I can certainly run it past, but my suspicion would be, again, I didn't, wasn't background on this fully, that I believe that the other are very clearly defined legal requirements versus bullying, which is a little bit more of a nebulous vibe, but certainly covered by, because it's hard to be bullying without being intimidating, threatening, or aggressive.
It may be like election workers, yeah, it's covered.
Yeah, but I would, I am definitely happy to run that past him to see clarification on that.
Yeah, and then if he does make this change, we, I don't, we've typically voted on personnel policy changes, but I'm not sure we have, we have to vote on them, because it's technically in the purview of town managers' responsibilities.
Yeah, it's always been a, the word escapes me, sorry, folks. Not a courtesy, but, you know, just, it's, it's informative.
Right, I mean, we voted on, we definitely wanted to be voting on the elements in the personnel policy that had fiscal implications, and we've done that, but I'm not, and I know we've, we've talked about other things like diversity, equity, inclusion, and dress code, but I don't know if we ever really voted. We, I don't think we voted on those lists.
No, I would say that we wouldn't have to vote to accept this myself, but.
Can I just note that there are, I mean, I, I sort of Googled bullying in the workplace, because I was curious, you know, if it's well-defined. And it does seem to be, there's an article from the Harvard Business Review, for example, that has a workplace bullying taxonomy. I mean, it, it does seem to be, and, and there's, can be, there, there are behaviors that are included in that that aren't included in, in what John wrote up, you know, kind of to Dan's point.
From a violence standpoint.
Yeah, it's not necessarily violent, but it can be like, you know, bringing up your past mistakes repeatedly, or.
Shunning someone.
Yeah, or, yeah, not refusing to interact with somebody, and things like that. That seems to me to be, it, it sort of creates an atmosphere of workplace toxicity. And, and, and so even though it's not violent per se, it, it's still very unpleasant, so I.
And it's unprofessional also.
It's very unprofessional, yeah.
I favor adding bullying.
Yeah, I do, too, if it's, if it's not, there's no legal reason to exclude it, so, yeah.
Yeah, I, I guess I would, I mean, it seems to me that we would have the ability to assert control over these policies if we desired. Control over these policies if we desired, over personnel policies.
No, it's the, it's the purview of the manager. We could direct the manager to do something, but it's, but we don't.
Well, exactly, sure, I mean.
But, but, but as far as us having to put our stamp on it by voting.
Right, oh, no, no, I know, but I'm saying, I guess I'm saying, yeah, we could direct the town manager to, eh, change the policy.
Yeah.
Sure.
I mean, we, yeah, I think it's, um, it's, there are some gray areas in the relationship, I think. There are some things that are shared, and certainly, you know, that should apply to us too.
Yeah, but I, I guess I would say, if it, if it's not stated in the charter that we don't have jurisdiction over personnel policies, I'd say that. We, we could have jurisdiction over.
Yeah, I think it does state, I'd have to reread it again, but it does state that we don't have influence on, um.
Day to day operations.
Day to day operations, which, I mean, perhaps personnel.
It's different than policy.
You're right, we, yeah, I don't, perhaps, perhaps we should review it, especially since we're now gonna be crafting a position description, so.
Yeah, and the charter isn't the, I mean, there's plenty of state statute that governs the boundaries of what we can and can't do. That aren't necessarily in the charter, in fact, the charter defers to state government if there's any conflict, so.
Yeah, I mean, charter or state government, I mean, eh, unless there's a legal bar that I'm not aware of. Yeah, and that, that's not to say that we have the right to, I don't, I'm not asserting the right to intervene in personnel matters. You know, day to day matters, I'm, I'm just talking about policies.
Yeah, I was just looking at town manager duties under the charter, just.
So while I look, I would just like to say, in no way am I in favor of excluding bullying, cause I'm in favor of bullying. So I just wanna get that on the table, I am not on the side of the bullying, so, but I think it's a very good suggestion, I definitely would, am interested to see what the answer to that is.
We'll find out, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, item C under section two of the charter does say, the town man- manager shall be, be administrated, have head of the town. And shall be responsible to the council for the administration of all departments assigned. Manager shall appoint, remove, and fix the compensation of all town officers or agents whose elections or appointments have not been otherwise provided for by this charter. All such offices shall serve under the direction of the town manager, but yeah, it doesn't explicitly, from what I can see, exclude.
No, the charter's kinda nice, it's not forty eight hundred pages long.
But we should, we should definitely look at this when we're crafting the town manager job description or editing what we already have. And, um, perhaps incorporate things we feel are lacking here.
At least we don't expect the town manager to be the clerk anymore.
Yes, that's true, we did amend that a couple of years ago. The voters did, rather.
Yeah, that was good.
Yeah. Any other thoughts on this, um, personnel policy change? And if John wants us to look at it, and, uh, when he formally changes the policy and feels the vote would be beneficial, just to record our support. We, we can do that, just whatever he would prefer.
But if he was ready to move on without your, I mean, your consent is kind of given.
Yeah, our consent is.
Bullying is up in the air, but apart from that, we're good to go either way, depending on advice, perfect.
That and election workers, just to clarity on whether we need to include their specific title. Go ahead, did you?
I was just gonna say, wha- you know, yeah, no, I'm, I think I'm splitting hairs, never mind.
Okay, so Dan, I, I didn't, I know you didn't have materials for the next agenda item, um, you just sort of had a.
Just my email.
Proposal, yeah, you had an email and a proposal, and I, I wanted to just gauge support on, um, whether or not we wanna move forward with. The changes that you're, um, proposing, so would you mind just giving an overview of what you sent an email?
Yeah, no, I'm back, um, closer to the beginning of the month. I sent an email to, um, the council and Nate and Josh, um, because he was coming on deck. And Doug Webster was in that. The discussion about self-storage units has had me thinking. There's been several events over the last summer and early spring that have kind of. Caused me to think about what's happening currently around our building codes. And what that, what the potential impact of that is on the kind of changes that we've talked about wanting to make. As I've said a few times, uh, if you look at the land that's currently set aside for commercial purposes. Um, the last time I did the numbers, and I can circulate that little spreadsheet I did, um, it was about three percent of, of the town. There's not a tremendous amount of space set aside for them. But our, uh, uses table is, is pretty wide open on a lot of different things, and there isn't any, um. Doing this from memory now, there isn't any zones in town where residences are not allowed. I don't even think there's any zones where they're not considered a permitted use. The conversation around self-storage units, of course, we've had the discussion about the three hundred foot setback. And, um, the concerns that people have expressed about that. I know that some people have continued to say that that's an arbitrary number, um, it isn't an arbitrary number. One of the reasons why we came up with the three hundred foot setback, and we had a lot of conversation about, can we make it two fifty, can we make it adjustable? Can we make it something that will expand and contract, in an attempt to try and work with the folks who feel pretty strongly that that's not a reasonable. Setback, but we don't know what the soils are on all the different sites. And when you have a commercial property, it's a significantly different need and strain on the property than a residence. You have septic, so you would need a larger septic system possibly for commercial property. There's parking, you'd have a lot more imperious surface on, on a commercial site usually. There's the placement of parking and the placement of the building that either, um, opens the property up for future uses. And makes it a flexible piece of property, or kind of locks it in and precludes other kinds of development because of the decisions that were made. When the building was first built. Residential buildings are not conducive to being adapted easily to other uses. If you remember when we talked about duplexes in the village and we created those design standards, one of the things we did was. Set a standard that there can be no interior bearing walls in those buildings, such that. The whole first floor of a duplex in the village could be opened up a- as commercial space or one large space. In other words, it could be easily reconfigured into something else. With the increase in housing, um, need, um, more and more pieces of property are changing hands. Recently, um, Scott Liberty's been before us a few times, he had a piece of property, um, associated to the self-storage unit. Buildings that he created, um, he ultimately broke that off, and, and, and a single family home was built on that property. Closer to the village, um, nearer to the credit union and the golf course. A lot right on, uh, two oh two, one hundred, um, has a house going up on that lot. So. The other piece of the puzzle for me is, we don't have a lot of building stock for businesses that wanna come to Gray. We don't have a lot of existing structures that somebody could repurpose. The latest example that I know about is when, um, Paris Farmers Union was looking for a new location in this area. They wanted to come to Gray, they couldn't find anything suitable, they found a suitable structure in Raymond, and now they're, they're located over on three oh two. The economy is changing, there's a significant, um, um, stock of commercial space that's unused. The idea of someone coming to Gray and, and building a new big commercial building, um, I think is, is not. Realistic in the foreseeable future, but ten years from now, fifteen years from now, who knows? So in the end, what I'm proposing is that we disallow single family hu- actually, we disallow. Any residential structure smaller than eight units is where the starting point of the conversation would be. That building would most likely be at least a three-story building, so there's that part of the conversation that we would have to have. But the design standards on that building such would be that it could easily be converted to retail space or office space. I think it's more likely that we're going to see a need for residential structures in town than we are to see. Office buildings or anything like that, and a space like this that may start out as a three-story residential building. You know, the first floor could easily be converted to retail space, um, if the design standards were right. So, um, I think that we are seeing our, and the other piece is residential uses and commercial uses. Don't usually fit next to each other, you have a house, you've got a bank or another building next door to that, you've got lights on all night, you've got more traffic. I just think that it's, my suggestion is more in line with what we're hoping, but where the comp plan is leading us to go. And so that's kind of the, as much thought as I've put into it so far.
As I understand it, this is, this would, your, your proposal would apply to, uh, business and, and commercial zones?
Um, it would apply to, yes.
Not townwide.
Um, BD one and two. Commercial, uh, and then VC, VCP. It would also, the, the, um, light manufacturing overlay. And the WH one and two districts, which are pretty small.
I just wondered, I don't know that the public was getting that part of it, when you just, when you said.
Yeah.
To, you know, to have a moratorium on.
All of those are pretty readily, if you, if you go to the GIS map on the town page, um, you can see in, in a minute.
So there would, there would still be residential uses allowed in places zone specifically for residential.
Outside of those zones, yes, I, I'm not suggest, well, yeah, that's another conversation, my, my original. Yeah, that's as far as this proposal goes, my original proposal, which was also evolved anywhere that single family homes are allowed. I'm not sure, because of the ADU bill and those laws that were passed, that we could do what I was thinking of doing there. If it turns out we can, I'll, I'll be back.
What, what was the, what was the part that you were worried about, LD two thousand and three on?
Years ago, we tried to put forth, uh, a, a residential. So I'm sorry, folks, eh, basically what we wanted to do was, we wanted to afford some protection to existing neighborhoods. So you have, you have these clusters of neighborhoods up past Tannerford, on the right of, of, uh, twenty six. Uh, here in town with Gray Park, or over by Wayne Street, um, down by Dry Mills where Marie, Weymouth, and twenty six are. So you have these clusters of residential areas, and we were working on an ordinance that would afford some standards. As to what could go in those residents, what would be appropriate to go in those residents for commercial space or, or businesses. And that doesn't exist now, that effort kind of, um, fell apart because it bumped into is- issues around the wellhead that we couldn't solve. But I still feel like, um, and I'm, eh, eh, that that's, that that would be a valuable effort to do it. To, to go forward with, I'm not looking to put in place like a protectionist kind of ordinance. I'm not trying to, uh, prevent buildings from being built. But I think that for each and every one of us, um, well, for most of us, well, for me in fact. My house is my most valuable personal possession, and if someone, you know, moves to my neighborhood. And I'm gonna pick on them, um, forgive me gravel pit owners, but if someone opens a gravel pit right next to my house. That's not gonna improve the value of my property, and certainly not gonna fit with the neighborhood. So how do we, um, help people maintain the value of, of what they've worked to get? We hear time and time again, people don't want the things to change, which of course is inevitable, changes. But the idea that if you're going to build more residences within an existing residential area, is there, is there a problem with. Having enough design standards that it fits? And isn't something that just looks like it fell out of the sky and lands there because our ordinances are really open-ended? And so, but that's, I don't wanna go too much into that, cause that's not really part of this proposal. And I'm not sure that, um, that we can do anything about that. I know that the planning board has been dealing, and I think I've shared with all of you, instances where old subdivisions. Are being resurrected by new developers who are changing, are coming before the planning board. And asking for amendments that are significantly different to the original plan that was approved. In our ordinances, there's nothing that says, you know, once you get, once you get, uh, permission from the planning board to put in a s- a subdivision, that's what you have to put in. And there's also been some anecdotal evidence that, you know, unfortunately, not everybody's honest and straightforward. And so people have been told one thing and something else has been done, the something else that was done was well within the confines of the ordinances. But it was completely different than what, than what was, the people who bought into those neighborhoods or lived in those neighborhoods thought was gonna happen to their neighborhood. You know, it's not against the law to lie in a lot of circumstances, you can't do anything about that. But I do think that with some design standards, we can still allow, like ADUs. If someone's building an ADU, is there any real problem? Or, or can, is it really a constraint to ask them to build it in such a way that it fits within the design of the current neighborhood? I don't think that's an onerous expectation, you know, if someone goes into a neighborhood and just builds a, you know, a square box. Because that's the cheapest thing to build, and they, and they, um. Anyway, sorry, th- those are, those are my thoughts, I'll stop.
Well, yeah, I was just gonna say, why don't we take kind of a straw poll for people who wanna pursue this, but yeah, go, if you had some thoughts.
I, I actually had some questions for Dan, um, and I'm, I'm wondering, if the concern is residential construction in. Sort of commercial or business zones, why allow any residential construction? I mean, uh, I'm just.
Because I think that the buildings that I suggest we allow in those zones are, will provide. The bu- the, the, the building stock for future commercial development. And we don't have that now, and, and I don't think commercial development is gonna get it. But there's a lot of interest in building multi-story residential structures right now. So in, in my mind, it's, it's, it's smaller steps to where we wanna go.
I see, and do, do other, do you know other towns have enacted these kinds of restrictions?
I don't.
Okay, and, um. I mean, uh, all New England towns have always combined commercial and residential, I mean, in our village, we do. So it isn't always the case that commercial and residential can't live side by side, uh, harmoniously. So, eh, and I, and, and certainly if, if there's an eight-unit building, you know, that's residential in the business zone, that's still combining it.
Well, for the same reason that we've, we've come up with a plan for a three hundred foot setback for SSUs. To allow for higher value commercial use, the same logic in my mind applies to residences. You know, i- if we're trying to, if, if we're trying to preserve that valuable. Road frontage, um, having a single family house in that space doesn't do it. I mean, having an ordinance that, that allows the combination of commercial or retail and residential, my idea is not fully formed. I'm, I'm not against that, but we do have a small amount of space that's dedicated to commercial.
And I just have a couple of quick more questions, uh, how long a moratorium, uh, how are you proposing?
Six months is what we would.
And then where does this fall on our council priority list?
It's not there now, so that's why we're having the conversation.
Go ahead, Matt.
I would, I, I guess I, I would just say that that's, the, the part that attracts me the most to this proposal is. Um, the idea of, um, putting the brakes on single family homes in commercial zones and, um. And, and, you know, and. Also, I, I like the idea of encouraging, um, multi-unit residential. also, I, I like the idea of encouraging, um, multi-unit residential buildings too, and, you know, and the idea that if we design them such that, or require them to be designed such that they can be converted to commercial, I mean, there's a lot of interlocking parts in the idea that appeals to me.
Yeah, um, I like elements of what you're, of your argument, but then I have some concerns about other, others. Like, I, the, all the zones you listed, when I look at the map, well, first of all, our map is in flux. Um, that, we have a current map with the zones you list. But we're working on updating the map to reflect the comprehensive plan, so.
I work with what I have available.
Yeah, I know you did, I'm, I'm more just thinking, if we do a moratorium for six months and then our comp plan map isn't finalized, what are we gonna, how are we gonna go from there? But then, but part of my thinking with that is, one of these zones you include is the commercial zone, and that is actually, the way it's currently laid out on our current map is very, um, large and inclusive of a lot of road frontage along Route one-hundred. I certainly wouldn't mind having a conversation about restricting the types of residential use particularly closer to the village, um, because those are the places we really are hurting for road front and, road frontage, and want to see the types of development you're talking about, multi-unit housing, that potentially is mixed-use, and also more commercial spaces. But I also think we could also, we could have a similar conversation to what we had around self-storage units, and perhaps just implement a setback rather than potentially excluding, you know, single-family residences in total, so.
I, for me, the, for me, to be honest with you, the most valuable component of my suggestion is the building stock. Because I just don't, uh, no one has shown me any, anything, any evidence that even if we, even if we are able to implement the Main Street and Yarmouth Road projects, that in the, in the five to eight-years timeframe, we're going to see any significant new construction that's gonna help us diversify the tax base. The project that got away from us, I think, is the Weeks Hill project up here behind us, where that was going to be, I think it was thirty-six units on fifty acres. It was essentially an open-space, multi-unit development that would have generated, you know, to, you know, Lauren's best guess and the, and the developer's best guess, you know, at least seventy-five or eighty thousand dollars in taxes a year. So, you build three or four or five of those things in town, and it's gonna have a significant impact on, on the tax base, something we haven't been able to do. I know people are concerned that it will bring more children in, but most of these places are one- or two-bedroom apartments. A lot of them, quite frankly, the, the statistics I've seen are, are populated by folks like myself, who are looking to downsize. And even so, the school population drops below a certain number, and that becomes a different kind of expense. We still have all the carrying capacity of all the infrastructure, and, but not enough, uh, children to support it. So anyways, it's that, it's that how, it's the building stock that I think I'm really after.
Well, why don't we just do a quick poll on how many of us support this? I think, um, when we, when we talk about moratoriums, there's an urgency around those.
There is.
So, I, you know, we would have to revisit our priority list if we move forward with this, so.
The next step for me would to get some feedback from Doug and, and Kristen would be my, you know, they may say that's a crazy idea.
Can, can I also just make a suggestion that, I mean, uh, two other resources available to us are, the town manager, uh, town managers around the state have a kind of a listserv, and like the library directors do, and, and, um, I, you could post something on that, and, and the, and the planning, I'm sure, I'm sure the planners have, there's, they're kind of networked. I'd be interested, I mean, mixed-use development that includes commercial, residential, you know, is a thing, obviously, yeah. And, um, I'm, I'm just, but I'm, I'm sort of curious how well it, how it's worked in other towns in, in Maine, and, and, uh, I'm, I'm open to it, but I also feel like we spent, you know, seven hours on Saturday talking about, you know, honing down our to-do list, and, and, um, uh, I'm, I'm torn because there is something of a urgency to this, uh, you know, to, or maybe urgency may be overstating it, but, I mean, land is continuing to be gobbled up and, um, and used for, for purposes for which that zone wasn't intended. So, I'm, I'm open to talking about this more, but it feels like maybe we need a little more information, and maybe think about when we, uh, implement it.
Right, maybe perhaps, um, we could gather some information from surrounding towns, like Anna's saying, and come back to it with a workshop discussion.
I can do that.
Yeah, um, would others be in favor of just hearing more about this?
I'm in favor of hearing more, and particularly more information on, on the urgency, on, on what's happening right now.
Sure, why not?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dan. Um, we will adjourn our workshop at six fifty-seven and resume, um, at seven oh-three for our regular meeting.